Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, March 5th, 2018. I'd ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we meet in as the City Council, we are ever thankful for the many blessings that have been showered upon Batavia over this past many years. The continued development and redevelopment of the town heightens and it will make some a great community awareness of all the improvements that have been done over the years to enhance Batavia and make it a great city for people to live in and raise their families. As always tonight, we want to ask for a special blessing to be showered upon those who are serving our country in defense of our liberties throughout the world. And we just ask that a special blessing be showered on them and all those serving with them as they go about their vital mission. As always, we want to ask for a special blessing also to honor those who are serving us on our police and fire and emergency services and disaster agency, knowing that they are called and do outstanding jobs and perform as to their duties throughout the year. And in the remainder of the city family, we also want to remember all those from public works and all these other city services for the good times they provide as far as the work that they do on all kinds of days and nights and holidays. And it allows us to appreciate what a blessed community we are to have such a cadre of outstanding public servants working for us. We also ask that we have guidance and direction tonight as we act on the various items before us on the agenda, just knowing that each of us in our own hearts and minds is here to do what in our own ideas is the very best we can on behalf of the community. We ask for all these blessings, amen.
Amen.
Alderman Callahan, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to define the United States of America and to a republic where we're just saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Senator Kirk, please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Jansett.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Euer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all fourteen elected Aldermen are present in the counterforce so we have the necessary form to conduct business. Moving to item number four, items to be removed, added or changed on the agenda. Alderman Atack is Chairman of Governmental Services. Do you have anything?
I don't have anything this evening.
Anybody else? All right, moving then to item number five, which is the appointment of Zachary Sage as a member of the Batavia Paid-ON-Call Fire Department. And I would ask for a motion of confirmation of my appointment of said individual.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second Alderman Stark, for the approval of the Paid-ON-Call Firefighter appointment. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Jansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Motion's approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. And I recognize Chief Dyke for an introduction.
Our new paid-on-call is Zachary Sage. Zachary, if you could come forward, please. He lives in Batavia, he's a firefighter too and an EMT. He did a little bit of time at the St. Charles Fire Department. And he currently works over at Donner Hospital as a patient care technician in the Critical Care Unit.
Raise your right hand. Give you one of these clip-on ones here. I instate your name. Having been appointed to the position of Paid-ON-Call Firefighter with the Batavia Fire Department in the city of Batavia, in the counties of Kane and DuPage, DuSalle we swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of Paid-ON-Call Firefighter with the Batavia Fire Department to the best of my ability. Congratulations. All right, then, we will move to item number six on the agenda, the presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Atack.
The consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file committee of the whole minutes from January 30th and February 6th, 2018. January 2018 building report. Approvals: February 23rd, 2018 payroll in the amount of $866,639.85. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $842,908.39. And city council minutes for February 19th, 2018. I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atack, second Alderman Stark, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Jansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Jansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
It's really great to see all of you here again this evening.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
I appreciate your time. Aye. I'm going to do a brief presentation, actually, on an ambassadorship program for students
McFadden.
Aye.
Motion's approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, now we have several presentations tonight. The first one is by Scott Corbin.
that we established in 2015 in St. Charles.
Are you here, Scott?
And the wonderful news that we have for you all this evening is that it has officially
Could you come up and use the mic and?
expanded to the Tri-Cities as of this year. So thank you so much for having me. I apologize about the static microphone noise. My name is Scott Corbin. I'm from St. Charles, and I will proceed with the presentation. Good to see you again, Mayor.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you, Laura. The Tri-Cities JANK Ambassadorship and Guitar of St. Charles JANK Award was established by Mayor Rogina in partnership with the JANK Guitar Store in 2015. It has been our esteemed privilege to recognize a truly outstanding local youth each year who is nominated by teachers, mentors, and peers for their embodiment of the unifying and universal spirit of music and of our community. The Tri-Cities JANK Ambassadorship is not a talent award. It is a recognition of a young person's ability to activate the values of our community through love, support, diversity, using music and creativity to do so. These outstanding young people have been living examples of artistic diversity and cultural awareness and used these to foster support and inclusivity for the adults and peers in their life. From hundreds of applicants, one is chosen for this honor each year. In 2016, the nominee, the student who won, was George Ressinger, our 2017 ambassador. Her name is Crystal Kotvan. And on June 12th, 2018, we will find out the third and first ever Tri-Cities JANK Ambassador. Each school year, the community is invited to nominate talented young people with the most eclectic taste and ability to appreciate and express different genres in keeping with the JANK tradition. Nominees are judged by a panel with representatives from Park District, city officials, business leaders, and the JANK Guitar Store on their proficiency and for performing and/or advocating for greater access to diverse music and culture. The recipient is honored in an annual ceremony hosted by the Mayor of St. Charles and the JANK Guitar Store. And this year, we'd of course love to have city officials from Batavia as well. It's June 12th. We'd really love to have you at the ceremony. Of course, Laura will have the details. I'll provide them to her with pleasure. And so we actually make the presentation of the award at Lincoln Park in St. Charles. And the recipient represents the community on a global scale as the acting Tri-Cities JANK Ambassador for one school year. So who is eligible for nomination? It's ages 11 to 18 years old. They must live in Batavia, Geneva, or St. Charles. Qualifications reflects musical qualities, meaning they are able to conduct effective communication, compose plans and structures for themselves and their peers to follow, and/or produce timely, meaningful results. The Tri-Cities JANK Ambassadorship is not a talent award. Again, it's a recognition of their ability to activate the values of our community through support, and they might use music to do so, but not rather about talent. Briefly, benefits for students: The Tri-Cities JANK Ambassadorship is an important recognition to achieve. It is also an unprecedented opportunity to gain valuable life and professional experience through meetings with elected officials representing the city in high-profile events such as the St. Patrick's Day Parade, public speaking and media interviews as well, critical thinking and analysis of music and art, shadowing arts and business leaders. Again, this is a program that we started in 2015, and it is with such pleasure, being a person who raised in the Tri-Cities and played Tri-City soccer growing up, that the Tri-Cities community as three communities as one is really something quite special. And for us to have this this year expanded to Tri-Cities, it means the world to me personally. It's a representation of how the three cities work together as one unit. And so we're very, very proud that due to the overwhelming interest from the last two years in the nomination process, it has officially become the Tri-Cities JANK Ambassadorship. To nominate, I will close with letting you know how you can nominate a youth. That would be if you visit a website. If anybody did have any brief questions, it'd be my pleasure to answer them. Again, my name is Scott Corbin regarding the Tri-Cities JANK Ambassadorship. And it's really lovely to see all of you again here since my last visit in 2017.
Well, thank you for the exciting news. I guess one thing, because we are on TV here and a lot of people do watch it, could you maybe give us your address or where your store is located, but also your email address and your phone number?
Absolutely. So my name is Scott Corbin. I can be reached at (206) 779-2883. My email address is corbin11@hotmail.com. And you can reach us anytime at 100 Illinois Street, St. Charles, Illinois 60174.
Anybody on the council have any comments or questions? Thank you for coming in, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. Take care. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving to item eight, which is presentation on the statewide tornado drill by our ESDA Director, Mark Davis.
Good evening, everyone. I just thought I'd stop by for a quick reminder that this week is the National Weather Service Severe Weather Prepare this week. So the National Weather Service would like you to review your personal severe weather preparedness, things that you do at home. Have your disaster kit ready. Make sure it's all set up, ready to go. And so tomorrow, we'll be doing the statewide tornado drill. Just to leave you some information on our tornado sirens system. A lot of people think, we've had some discussion, that some people think that our tornadoes are tested every week on Tuesday. They are not. They are tested the first Tuesday every month. MusHart, though, does test theirs every Tuesday. So there is some confusion on the south side when people hear the sirens because they think something's going on, especially when we have a good, strong south wind seem to carry the sirens. So just to clear that up, we only sound, test the sirens on the first Tuesday every month. With that said, tomorrow, we're going to sound the siren, but we're going to do it a little bit differently. We're going to sound it as it's actually a tornado warning. So that means it's going to run for seven minutes. So I've got the word out on Facebook, on our site and a couple other of the Batavia sites, to inform everyone that it's just a test. And of course, the weather, of course, doesn't, isn't conducive to tornado weather right now, but because it's snowing again. I think it's happened last year at the same time. So that's what's going to happen tomorrow at 10 o'clock. What's going to happen is all the weather radios are going to go off, all your TVs are going to get interrupted with tornado warnings. It should say "test." It better say "test." And we don't want another Hawaii. And so that's when you're supposed to think about what you're supposed to do when that happens. So just a reminder, tomorrow is going to go off for seven minutes. Any questions?
Alderman Rock?
Mark, when and if there ever is a need that you have to sound the sirens, could you explain, so everybody knows, if it's an all-clear, do you sound it again or not? How does that work?
No, we do not sound an all-clear. And the reason why we don't do that is just in case, we've had a couple times where we've had multiple tornado warnings where so we have to sound the siren a second time. So there is no all-clear. So if you hear it the second time, that means there's another tornado warning specifically for Batavia. We don't sound the siren for a tornado warning that's in northern Kane County. It's specifically for Batavia area only. So if you hear our sirens, that means something's happening.
And Mark, just because they shut off does not mean it's, you can?
No. It's only seven minutes just to make sure everybody hears it. And of course, we recommend everyone gets a weather radio because it's really an outdoor warning system. So if your house is all closed up and you can't hear the siren, hopefully you have a radio or TV on or a weather radio that will go off and let you know what's going on.
Anybody else? I guess I want to remind you, next Tuesday night, we're going to have the committee, the whole one. You're going to be a doubleheader there. You're going to talk about the fireworks program, and then you're also going to talk about seeking volunteers for the ESDA program.
Right. I'll be here.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, moving then to item number nine, which is a presentation on DoOver.me by Cynthia Wade.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, City Councilpeople, Laura, and I'm looking for Anthony because I talked to Anthony several times on the phone, and he told me he'd be here, but he's not here?
He's not here.
Oh darn, okay. So my name is Cynthia Wade, and I'm the founder and managing director at doover.me. So can I have a show of hands? How many of you have ever heard of doover.me? Darn. So we're the best kept secret in Kane County. And I'm here to tell you a little bit about who we are, what we do, and about two special programs that we're kicking off in 2018 that we want to make sure that everybody knows about. I have some handouts. I'm going to send them around. There's actually four different things you're going to want to grab: A business card, a trifold brochure, a flyer about doover.me, and then there's another flyer that has some information on one side about a program called Faces of the Fox, and on the flip side, a program called Guiding Lights. So the first question is, what is doover.me? In 2013, when I turned 60 years old, I had a series of events happen in a very close period of time which put me into a tailspin. I had always been a pretty resilient person, single mom, raised a daughter, totally on my own, worked as a commission-only salesperson. I knew what it was like to hit challenges and to try to figure out your way out of them again. But this was like nothing I had ever encountered before, and I really sunk into a deep depression and really didn't quite know what I was going to do with myself. I knew, having worked in the recruiting industry for 11 years, that at 60 years old, it was going to be really tough for me to get another job. So what I decided to do with the background and the education and experience that I had was start a community career center in the Kane County area so that people who live in Kane County, our marketplace is typically from Aurora on the south to Elgin on the north, have someplace locally that they can go when they need help to find work. Because the world of work is changing very, very rapidly. Even as we stand here and talk, it's changing. It's really hard to keep up with. If you don't understand how to go about finding a job in today's world, it just makes it so much more difficult. After having worked as a recruiter for 11 years, I knew what that world looked like. I knew best how to help candidates present themselves, market themselves most effectively to employers in order to be able to get jobs. So in March 2014, four years ago this month, I founded doover.me. We are a not-for-profit. We serve and provide services to clients on a sliding scale so that everybody has access to these services. If you're a professional that makes $200,000 a year and want to come to doover.me, I've placed lots of individuals with that kind of income level. But if you're a lower-level employee or even a kid just getting out of college and can't find a job, we can also work with you. And you pay based on your total household income and the number of people that are in your household. Basically, what we do is help people figure out what it is that they should be doing. We try to talk to people about their strengths and steer them into job fields that are going to be around in the future that are going to take advantage of their natural strengths. And we find that in doing so, people are going to be happier and more successful. Once we determine what that entity is going to look like for each individual, then we help them market themselves effectively into those jobs. And it can be different for everybody. Some people need more help with the resume and LinkedIn kinds of experience. Some people, a lot of people, need help with interviewing. Most people need help with networking. They have no idea what a network is, let alone how to use one effectively. And really, you need to have that in order to find a job. We will work with you where you're at and help you move forward from that point on to get it, to get where you want to go. We've had a lot of success. In spite of the fact that we're a very small organization, just since January of 2018, nine people have found jobs. Nine doover.me clients have found jobs. So we have a proven track record of success. One of the challenges that we've had in getting doover.me up and running is bandwidth. We're not established enough for me to be getting lots of grants from lots of big-name people, so there's not a lot of money to go around. And there was no big founder that helped me financially get this up and running. So what we decided to do was work with interns from Adler University who provide us with the bandwidth that we need to get programs up and running. So the last piece of paper that I sent around has the two programs that the interns are working on. One of them is called Guiding Lights. This is modeled after the Casa Kane County program and is a program that's designed to pair a volunteer member of the public with every client that comes through doover.me to help them to try to get where they're going. And this really helps to duplicate me because I can't do it all. So if I have a partner that I can work with, together, we're going to be able to help this person move forward. We're looking for opportunities to speak to different groups in the area about the program. We're having our first training on April 7th, and then there'll be another one in the fall. So if you are a member of any group that is interested in hearing about this volunteer opportunity, there's two ways that you can find out more. You can go to the website, and at the announcement bar at the top, click on Guiding Lights. It'll take you to a page that'll explain the program, everything about it, and provide you with an application in order to be able to express your interest in the program. The other flyer on the flip side is called Faces of the Fox. Faces of the Fox is a traveling, interactive, community photo exhibit designed to showcase the marginalized populations that live in the Fox Valley. What we're doing right now is taking applications, if you're a part of a marginalized group, and that can be anyone, you know, someone of color, someone of different ethnicity, someone of a different gender identification, a different sexual orientation, a different language, a different religious belief, any part of the population that is not what we typically think of when we think of the Tri-Cities area. We want to show the world that these people are here. We want to neutralize those labels that we put on each other. You know, psychologists will tell us that labeling is a natural byproduct of our human experience because we need to categorize things, like is it good, is it bad? Is it going to help us? Is it going to hurt us? Is it going to love us? Is it going to hate us? By its nature, a label is not positive or negative. It's what we put onto it, the baggage that we bring to it, that makes it positive or negative. So what we want to do is neutralize the negative labels and allow people to choose their own identity so that we understand how to interact with them. Because the days of the golden rule, they're gone. It's not good enough anymore to say, "I'm going to treat you the way I would want to be treated." Because guess what? You might not want to be treated the way I want to be treated. I need to know who you are and how you want to be able to be treated. And I need to respond appropriately to that. And so in order to do that effectively, there has to be some labels. Faces of the Fox is going to premiere at Pachacah on May 31st. We're going to do a presentation there. And then we're having an opening night reception right here in Batavia at Limestone Cafe. It'll hang for a month at Limestone Cafe, and then it'll travel up and down the Fox Valley and be a month in each one of the locations. And we're going to be creating a community dialogue when the exhibit is in each community to try to get people to interact with each other and learn how best to be able to accept and embrace the wonderful, wonderful diversity that already exists here in the Fox Valley. Thank you very much for your attention. I appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions? I'm happy to answer any questions or clarify any information.
Mike, the speaker before you, can you give like an address and an email address and a phone number that we can put on? You're on the TV right now, so we get this out to people.
Oh, wow. Absolutely. Doover.me, the website is www.d-o-over.me. The telephone number is (630) 402-0429. We have a very, very robust website. There's a lot of information on our calendar about upcoming events, about the different things we do. The sliding scale is there. So anybody that wants more information is probably going to be able to find out what they want to know by looking at the website. And if you have a hard time navigating it, certainly give us a call. We're happy to help.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments?
Your organization, other questions?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, moving to ten is a presentation by the Batavia Women's Club. And I see we have some representatives there that I recognize.
We even have an honorary guest. Hi, we are here representing the Batavia Women's Club. I'm Dan Phillips, and I'm president of the club this year. And Sue Lustad, Patty Condon, Carolyn Leard, and we have our honorary Dan Hoefler here, which will become clear to you in just a moment. We are here to talk to you about a very special event that we are planning for next Saturday evening, St. Patrick's Day. We are going to celebrate St. Patrick's Day as members of the community, and we're reaching out to celebrate with several organizations, Dan being a part of two of them. He's in Rotary Club, which is working with us, and the Batavia Historical Society, as well as the Quanis, and Batavia Mothers Club, and Batavia Women's Club. We're all working together to get the word out, to have this fundraiser to raise money to go toward the depot museum expansion project. So it is planned for next Saturday night on St. Patrick's Day. Very casual, lots of fun, fun activities. Lottery tree?
Tuesday.
The 17th, not the 10th, the 17th. Oh, we, I'm working on this week, you know, and next week. Lots of fun, corned beef and cabbage, a good meal. Tickets are $50, and we'd like you all to come and join us at the VFW Island View Banquets, the old hangar. We're going to have even a chocolate Guinness cakewalk like the old PTO fun fairs and things. So we're just going to try to make it a really fun evening, and we'd like you all to come and join us. Lots of cash to win. The Batavia Women's Club was formed in 1892 by 12 women in Batavia who wanted to reach out philanthropically to address arts as well as history and to improve the Batavia community. And we've been here for 125 years. We're 83 members strong, and we are here to make this a fun time. So Dan, talk to us about the depot.
Okay. We got connected when I was down preparing materials for the expansion campaign down in the Augustus and Research Center. And these ladies were there, some of them who aren't here. And I didn't realize that we are the repository of some of their historical, or maybe all of their of their historical artifacts. So we got to talking, and I said, you know, "We're doing this expansion project. Could I come and present?" And of course, they were very gracious and said, "Yes, I was able to do that." And then their board decided that we would be the recipient of one of their fundraising efforts this year. I know that these dynamic ladies just do a tremendous amount of work in our community and support so many philanthropic efforts that you cannot say enough. So the Historical Society Expansion Capital Campaign will be the recipients of the monies that are raised that evening. So I really invite you to come out. We will also have there that evening on display the new schematic designs. I believe when you came to visit us last June, we gave you each a folder, and in that folder was the first set of designs. We completely overhauled that. And one of the reasons why we overhauled it was because of comments that we received that evening. We worked with members of the chamber. Holly was part of a group. Jamie from Main Street, Laura Newman representing the city. We sat, we talked about what do we really want in this expansion besides just storage and exhibition area? The welcome center idea was there, but when you see on Saturday, the seventeenth, not the 10th, but the seventeenth, we will have those plans out there. I know I provided Laura, and I believe she provided you, Mayor, with a updated copy. But we can certainly supply all of you more copies of those plans. When you take a look at it, you'll really be impressed. The most impressive thing is the windows. When you walk into a redesigned area coming off of the path, we were going to have people come in at the old entrance where you walk into the depot now. That's gone. That's going to be closed off. We're moving it further north, and it's going to be kind of a cathedral effect. And when you walk through that area, past the vestibule, there'll be an area for displays, welcome center potentially for the community in there. But you have a panoramic set of windows that look out directly across the pond here at City Hall, and you have this vista, which can also be a multipurpose use as well. So there's a lot of exciting things going on with the expansion. I am so forever grateful for these ladies. They let me come to their dinner, their planning, I behave myself. You know, Mrs. Hoefler said, "You better be careful." We also have some other things planned. At the end of this month, on the 29th, the depot is sponsoring a temperance rally. We'll meet, and we'll rally up there, and then we'll head over to Pal Joey's, for which you get a drink. And then next month is Preservation Week. And starting April 22nd, the Depot Museum and the Historical Society is starting the week off with an appraisal fair. So bring your items. We'll have appraisers there. I'm not sure if you want to call it Antiques Roadshow type of a thing. But we'll be down at the old boathouse, which has been remodeled, and we'll be there, and we're using that as a fundraiser. So a lot of things have been occurring and happening, and we greatly appreciate the opportunity from Laura and the mayor for being able to publicize this great event. I can't, again, I cannot say thank you enough to these ladies. And I know they have a postcard here ready to hand out to you, and if you'd like to buy a ticket tonight, I'm sure they'll sell you one. Anything else?
Yes. Tickets are available at our website, www.bataviewomensclub.org. That's woman with an A, not an E. And you can get them online, or like Dan said, we have them here tonight. So if you'd like to give us a check or a credit card, we'd be happy to sell you a ticket for a good time.
Don't be shy, show them you've got tickets.
Well, you know, knowing what kind of event they're planning here and knowing that the gals were going to be down here tonight, my wife told me to bring a check. So I do have a check here for two tickets.
Do you see how easy that is?
I'll take it.
Bang, just like that.
Thank you for letting us know. Tickets? Need your card?
Alrighty.
Mayor, do you need one? Did you want two?
Well, I certainly encourage everybody to join in on attending the Women's Club slash Historical Society event on the seventeenth, and I certainly would hope that it would be remembered as one of the really unique historical experiences for current generations of town to understand what really is going on here. And at the end of the day, the most worthwhile thing will be accomplished with the construction of the addition onto the Depot Museum. And so it's all good stuff for Batavia, and I think it speaks to the spirit of the town. All right, we're moving to item 11. Do we have anybody in the audience that wishes to address us for any item not on the agenda? I didn't think so. Okay, moving to item 12. We have the Holly, or Holly Deckman, the executive director of the Batavia Chamber has graced us tonight. So Holly?
Thank you. I'll try not to touch the microphone. But first off, I'd just like to say thank you, Mayor, for joining us on Friday morning for our Eggs Benefit event. We, a couple times a year, put on kind of a new member breakfast where we talk a little bit about what we have to offer so our members can get the most out of their membership in the Batavia Chamber. And the mayor joined us and said some very nice words, so thank you very much for that. We work very hard every day to be, to make you proud and our community. So a few events I just wanted to mention to you. We have a ribbon cutting and two-year celebration for Sure Movements Yoga on March 10th, which is this Saturday, not next Saturday, the 10th, at 10:00 a.m. So come and join us and maybe take a class or, you know, maybe sweat, I don't know. And then we have another ribbon cutting and grand opening celebration for the Sierra Trading Post. That's actually next Saturday on the 17th, but way before their shenanigans start at 7:45 a.m. And at that event, at 7:45, those that can attend, they're going to be giving a $10,000 check to Fox Valley Special Recreation Association. They came and met with us at the chamber, asked us if there was any organizations, nonprofits that locally encourage disabled people to get out and exercise and to appreciate the outdoors, which obviously Sierra Trading Post does a lot of outdoor outfitting clothing and such. So every year, they're going to be giving us $10,000 away. And so we kind of went through the list of all the nonprofits that are in the chamber, and we all settled on Fox Valley Special Rec. She sent it up the poll, and the next day, we got confirmation that they were going to give them the check. So I'm happy to be a part of that conversation and so excited that they are going to start off their journey here in Batavia by presenting one of our local gems with a $10,000 check. So that's awesome. Our next networking event is on March 21st. It's actually at Ann K Salon, which is in North Aurora. But they also, all of our networking events now give contribution to a local nonprofit. And this month, we chose the Fox Valley Special Rec as well. So we're all kind of tying into supporting their efforts this month. So that's from 5 till 7 p.m. again on March 21st. Then we have March 22nd. We've, again, partnered with the Valley Industrial Association for HR programming, and this time, it's on writing good job descriptions. So if anyone would like to attend to learn more about that portion or that piece of the HR puzzle, please let us know. And that's at 7:30 a.m. on March 22nd. Then just wanted to remind you all that March 25th through the 29th is Restaurant Madness Week. We have over 30 restaurants this year that have committed to a 20% discount on all of their, mostly all of their different menu items. So maybe make it a taste of Batavia and travel around. We'll be posting a lot of, well, at least it's another excuse to eat out that week. So please join us as we celebrate all the different menu options and cuisines that we have in Batavia during that week. On March 31st, we have another ribbon cutting. That's for Bernie Bully's Dog. Their hot dog cart will be at the Downtown Egg Hop on March 31st, and we will be doing a ribbon cutting for them, opening their service cart for the year on March 31st at the Peg Bond Center at 11:00 a.m. Last but not least, want to mention on April 10th is our next Women in Business Luncheon. That will be at Eagle Brook at 11:30. Dale Spencer will be presenting on Embracing Life's Journey. Any questions about anything that's happening at the chamber? We're happy to answer any of those questions or give us a call. We're getting a lot of calls this week about what's happening at Sierra Trading and at Dollar Tree when those will be opening. So we've been talking with community development about those, but happy to answer any other questions. If not, we have a very special guest with us today. One of our Inspire Award recipients this year was Moline Bearing Company. They are not new to Batavia, but they just do a nice interior remodel, most specifically of their interior office space. They made it very nice and comforting and welcoming for all of their employees inside the offices. And Andrea DeCouto is with us, though she wants me to pronounce it as Decoto so that you will maybe recognize her name because her father is Paul Decoto, and he is the former Geneva alderman and mayor pro tem. So I would like to, without any further ado, bring up Andrea DeCouto.
Welcome.
Hi. Mayor Schelke and council members, thank you for this opportunity to come by and say hello. Some of you look awfully familiar. Moline Bearing is a manufacturer of mounted bearing units for the mechanical power transmission industry. I love the business. It's wonderful. A lot of people get glazed eyes when you say that, so any questions I'll have, I'm happy to answer. We sell through industrial distribution to customers around the world, and we have six warehouses throughout the United States. Moline Bearing is an offshoot of the former Moline Mallable that was in St. Charles that started in 1869. We have been in business as Moline Bearing for 26 years. We moved from St. Charles to Batavia in 2007. We chose Batavia because of the feel of the industrial area in and around Redant Road. We're located on Redant Road. And it's also geographically desirable for all of our employees. We have 14 employees that live in Batavia and around in the Fox Valley area. We're really thrilled to be a part of the Batavia community and the Batavia Chamber of Commerce. I have to give a shout out to the Fire Department and Police Department. We've had need to have them over to our business over the last couple of years, not for fires, but for fires across the way, and they have been wonderful. Lots of kudos to both organizations. We're really appreciative of their professional abilities. And if you ever need any bearings, shaft collars, bushings, hubs, please give us a call. We'd be happy to help you. Do you have any questions?
Well, I just, I'd just like to say that we are very appreciative of having Moline Bearing in town. You've been a great addition to our industrial sector.
Thank you.
And you've worked very well with us and hope we keep you for many years to come. I will share a story with you about your father, though, because I, you know, I've been here so long that I go back into his era. And Paul was one of these people who didn't let things get in his way. He said that he never wanted to be part of any government that stood in the way of progress. I remember, that was one of his favorite sayings, and he was really kind of the floor leader of the Geneva City Council for many years. And then when, I believe it was when Mayor Adley got killed, he stepped forward and served as the mayor in the interim period till a successor could be chosen. But I always remember one day when Rando Road was starting to be built, and St. Charles already kind of had it up there north of 38, and Batavia started doing some stuff down at Main and Rando, and there was this void out there where Geneva now has some very nice-looking businesses. So one day, Alderman Decoto calls me up, and he says, "Could you meet me out on Rando Road?" So we go out there, and he says, "I just want to tell you, I'm really impressed by the landscaping that's being required of these businesses out here. This just isn't a sea of parking lots. You people have planted trees and put up windmills and put up bell shelters and done all this creative stuff, and I just want to make sure that Geneva falls in line with you and follows in Batavia's example of doing some nice landscaping along Rando Road." So would you mind if I take a few pictures here? Because we're getting ready, and it was, I think it was Venture was going to try to move into the store there at the corner of Fabian Parkway and Rando Road. And so Paul got out, and so he was taking all these pictures. And I later heard from some of the aldermen in Geneva that Paul certainly made sure that Geneva held itself together and didn't let Batavia go ahead of it as far as the appearances of landscaping along Rando Road. So today, when I have other mayors from the area come in and they want to go out and see Rando Road because it's kind of a regional experience that many of them want, they admire that, that you can go from Main Street in Batavia to Main Street in St. Charles, and it's perhaps one of the most strongly landscaped stretches of highway anyplace in northern Illinois. And to a large degree, I think your father gets a lot of the credit for that.
Thank you for saying that. I really appreciate hearing that. He also started the Geneva, All the Flowers in Downtown Geneva, All the Corners. That was one of his programs, and he felt very strongly, and I believe that was because of what he experienced with you here. And as an aside, I don't know what aldermen are part of. I was here for the campa, one of the campa hearings. I sent you an email because I was very impressed by the way that your council handled and ran your meetings. It was, I was really, really impressed, and it was a, it was a great lesson to bring back to, "I live in Geneva." So. You're professional.
Here we are, Batavia. We're setting the example.
Good night.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to business. Moving to 13, approval of waived formal bidding for the purchase of a combination sewer truck from EJ Equipment. Alderman Wolf, do you have that?
Thank you, Your Honor. We discussed this during the committee of the whole meeting. This is a shared vehicle through both budgets of the Street and Water Division and the Street, or the Street Division and the Sewer and Water Division. They'll share the cost of this. It is $310,000 from EJ Equipment in Mantino. Again, similar to some of the other big purchases that we've made lately for vehicles. This was actually not within the purchase plans that we have available to us, so that's why we're going to waive formal bidding on this. So if there aren't any questions, I'll make the motion that we waive formal bidding for the purchase of the combination sewer truck.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Savati to waive formal bidding for the purchase of the combination sewer truck. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll on the motion to waive formal bidding.
Wolf?
Aye.
Savati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Attack?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Motion's approved. 14 yes, no, no's none absent. Alderman Wolf.
Yes, and also to clarify, we've got a trade-in. I think it was $73,000 was listed for this. Right before the truck is available to us, we'll put that out on the sales sites and see if we can get more than that for it to reduce our cost on it. And this time, I'd really like to thank our Public Works Department for all the work that they do to try to keep these trucks up so that they are worth something when we have to get rid of one or replace one. We've done really well on that in the last couple cycles of buying trucks that we've been able to get in under budget or do better than what we thought we could. But again, just showing what that's worth as a trade-in, I think, is really good when it's 10 years old. With that, I'll make the motion that we approve the purchase.
That's item 14, I believe, right?
Yeah. Purchase of this combination sewer truck from EJ Equipment for the amount of $310,041.
Second. Motion by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Savati for the approval of Resolution 18-08-R, authorization to purchase of sewer truck from EJ Equipment for $310,041. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Savati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, moving to item 15, which is approval waiver of formal bidding for purchase of water meters from Midwest Meter Incorporated. Alderman?
I have this. Yes, I do. Thank you, Your Honor. We are looking to do some bulk purchasing of water meters. We are going to the same company we bought them from a few years back, so we'll need to waive formal bidding on that. So I'll make a motion to waive formal bidding.
Second.
Motion by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Atak to waive formal bidding on the purchase of the water meters. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Moeh?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atak?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Savati?
Aye.
Motion to waive formal bidding is approved. 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving to 16, which is Resolution 18-18-R, authorizing purchase of water meters from Midwest Meter Incorporated. Alderman O'Brien?
Yes, Your Honor, we are looking to, as I said, bulk purchase water meters, and we have a motion, I'd like to make a motion, that we purchase water meters from Midwest Meter Company and not to exceed $200,000.
Second. Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Wolf.
Yeah, Uer.
Uer. I was not sure which one of you guys said that there. Any discussion?
You know, I have a question for Gary, please. Gary, what do these meters cost?
Sorry, I don't have. So we've budgeted $200,000, and that, I had my memo last, that's roughly 1,000 meters, roughly.
About $200,000 a meter. I just wanted to get that out for our TV audience. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Kirk, call the roll then on Resolution 18-18-R.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Moeh?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atak?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Savati?
Aye.
Resolution 18-18-R is approved. 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving to 17, the Administrator's Report.
Yes, so next week, we'll have a Plan Commission meeting, and that is for some various text amendments to our zoning code. Also, as you heard report earlier today, the Sierra Trading Company is nearing the end of their inspections, and they're expected to be opening on March 17. Walmart has reopened their, the gas station, and the Prairie Commons Development has resubmitted their plans, and so a public hearing is likely to be conducted on March 21. In the Finance Department, they are actually looking at the utility billing software that they are currently using. For a number of years, we've been using a program that was internally developed by our IT staff, but we wanted to look at what other programs were out there that would improve efficiency, improve our ability for reporting, and number one, improve the ease of use for residents. And we've seen some software out there that gives the residents some, a lot of information that they can use about their utility usage. And so we wanted to perhaps look at that. We'll bring the research and a recommendation to City Council sometime in April. Our Streets Department is continuing their annual effort to clean the water debris from curb lining drainage structures and catch basins, and also street sweeping efforts to make sure that we clear out all of the winter debris that appears when the big huge piles of snow disappear. Also, there's a citywide effort to straighten signposts that shift with winter frost or snow operations, and then also parkway tree trimming efforts are continuing. On the electric front, work continues on overhead improvements in the Colonial Village neighborhood and engineering work on the reconstruction of the Paramount Substation that's located on our northeast side, and associated transmission line improvements remain on schedule. And work is scheduled to commence on that this fall. In the Engineering Department, we held meetings here last Thursday night, I believe it was Thursday night, for both Ward 1 and Area 3 stormwater projects. Both Alderman O'Brien and Alderman Savati were both president, present at those meetings, and we probably had about 20 people attend the meeting, and they had a lot of questions about what they could expect with regard to these projects. They seemed very happy that the city was undertaking to address some of the drainage issues on such a large scale. Others were there because they lived in adjacent areas that were not the subject of work that is happening in Ward 1 or Area 3 to express their concern that, that their areas were not being addressed. But it was a good opportunity for our Engineering Department to explain what their strategy was in terms of following the floods that happened in 2015, that there were identified certain areas which were made a priority due to the number of households that were affected by severe flooding and continue during severe weather events to be affected by severe flooding. And then also in the Area 3, where we're separating the stormwater and the sewer. And that seemed, they understood that. Also, the project is in an area where alleviating the bottleneck problems that exist in that area should have at least some incremental effect on the other areas of flooding that are happening throughout our community. So they were able to see from the way that the project was presented by our engineering staff that even those projects alone may have some positive effect on their situation. Did either of the Aldermen want to make any comments on those meetings?
I thought the Engineering Department did a great job of presenting, and I thought they were very thorough, very accessible, and very accommodating for those that were there.
Great.
Well, I want to say that people were concerned because it is affecting negatively their homes, and Engineering is doing their best to address those concerns. I still think, as I said that night, it's not enough. And I'm going to say it again, and say it any time the opportunity presents itself for me to say it, is that, you know, Engineering said that they are going with historic, historical data to come up with what, how they're going to approach these storms. And that historical data was till 1987, I believe it was, that the book was written. And so they're coming up with 10-year storm events. And the weather patterns have changed. I mean, that's indisputable. And so I think we're approaching this wrong, that we need to have, and they said, well, that's how engineers are doing it, and they did a fine job presenting it, but I know, I know I spoke to them about it, is we need to, our engineering perhaps needs more vision to say, you know, we don't have the data, but we know more water is coming at us. And so maybe exercise some vision and go to a 50-year, I mean, I'd rather a 100-year event, since we're getting to 100-year events twice a year, but at least go to a 50-year in water movement, you know, like upsize the pipes. We're going to have to do something. Now, this is happening now in the first ward, but this is going to continue to happen not only in the first ward, but the second, third, fourth, fifth, all the wards throughout the city. It's not just here in the first ward, it's all throughout the city. So I recommend all the Aldermen representing the people that they tie into this because it's coming out all of us, and it's, and I, and I get it, it's a money deal, and in the Area 3, we had to change, we had to separate the sewers. Very important, absolutely, and that had to have top priority, and I'm on board with that. But I think since we're addressing this, the first ward took a hit with the learning curve, and hopefully that the other wards are going to, you know, learn from it and argue for their, their safety. And as I said, again, I'm hoping to put forward, you know, put, that we bond out, you know, something to deal with all of this stormwater throughout the city, citywide, whatever it is, a $20 million bond. We discussed it briefly, but I think it's something we might want to look into. Didn't mean to just monopolize the conversation, but I wanted to get that out there again. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions about projects? Alderman Brown?
Yeah, Laura, just to be clear then, you said Prairie Commons has submitted their --
Yes.
They did?
Yes.
Okay, because your Friday report, they had.
They actually submitted it on Friday, and I didn't realize it. And then also, they submitted some additional materials just this afternoon.
Good. I'm anxious. I hope the rest of the council is also.
Yes.
I'm anxious to see that project come forward.
Yeah.
That's been out there since, I think, 2004. It was when they first approached the city, and then there's been many, not many, but a few different alterations and rendations of what may happen there that haven't gone through.
Mm-hmm.
And now we're right back to basically the original request and zoning and, and planned use development and design and everything else. So it should go fairly smoothly, I think.
Absolutely.
And I'm anxious to see that one get going.
And the developer said that they're interested in starting to build these as soon as they possibly can.
Yeah. And with what's coming up with Fermilab, I think it's a great opportunity for some housing for those people that'll be coming to us for that project out there, too. So it's a good project, I think. Thank you.
Should I talk a little bit about the agenda for tomorrow night?
If you can, or I will, either way. Go ahead.
Okay. So what we have planned for next Tuesday is Volunteer Night. Mayor has invited several of the organizations that serve our community, the toy drive, the fireworks, and a few others, to give a brief presentation and offer to the public opportunities that they have to volunteer with their organizations. However, we think that that's probably only going to require about an hour of time. By contrast, our agenda tomorrow night is quite filled, and we noticed last week, we had quite a full agenda with both the branding and the strategic planning, that we might want to move our strategic planning conversation from tomorrow to the 13th, just to make sure that it's, it's something that we have enough time to have a robust discussion about. So the plan is to, to move that to then. There also is the branding on the agenda for tomorrow night. Given that there's only going to be one hour of other material on the 13th, my question posed to you is whether perhaps we want to move the follow-up on branding to the 13th as well. And the only thing that would detract from that is there might be people from the public who now expect that to be on our agenda tomorrow night, but we would do, make every effort to post on Facebook, post on our website to get the word out there that we want to postpone that discussion. Because tomorrow night, we've got the, the crossing at McKee and 31 on the agenda. We've got the vacation of the alleyway for the adjacent to the Park District parking lot on the agenda, and we also have the annual report from all of our department heads. Lucy?
Do you think Spark is available to come the following Tuesday?
You know, they're not available to come tomorrow night, so it might be --
Oh, they're not?
They're not. So it might be that they would be --
And they were going to bring drawings. Do we have those?
We do.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I'd suggest that we postpone both those items until the 13th. I mean, I understand that the public may be expecting it tomorrow evening, but between the department heads and the McKee Street discussion, I think it's going to take up quite a lot of our time, and I don't think we should cut those items short. And I don't know about anybody else, but I have had some conversations with other Aldermen, and I think, I'm going to start as the chair of that committee, I think I'm going to start trying to hold us to a 10 o'clock hour. Once we get past 10 o'clock, we're not accomplishing anything. And if we start to see where, where we have so many items that we aren't fitting everything in, and we're not doing justice by pushing everything off all the time, then I'm going to suggest we go back to the committee structure so that we can get these items all taken care of. But for now, I would just suggest that we put these two items back to the 13th.
Sounds good.
Does anybody else have an issue with that?
No, I don't have an issue. I just have a quick question. Will, will there be a representative from the Park District here tomorrow night for?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Jimmy B. will be here from the Park District, and also Allison.
You know, I guess I would suggest that, that 13th one gets over, you know, overfilled, that you then say at 10 o'clock, that, hey, well, we're going to push something here back till the 20th or the 27th or whatever it is that you, you know, there, there should be enough time.
I think so.
To get everybody, you know, I, I don't know, I was kind of open-ended when we went to the Committee of the Whole thing, but my observation, having watched it now for a couple of years, is I really see some value in it because it brings every member of the City Council to the table to hear all the discussions about whatever the issue is. And, you know, when you go back to the old committee way, you got five on a committee or seven or whatever it is, but then you have a bunch of them that don't have the background, and a lot of this, all this stuff is pretty critical decision-making for the city, and I think everybody should be at the table if you can possibly do it.
Well, I might also suggest, too, that we start looking at the committee meetings starting at 7:00 PM rather than 7:30.
That's fine.
It just would give us that extra half hour, and --
That's a good idea.
It's something we can talk about at a committee meeting. Everybody can think about it between now and when we have that discussion.
Put that on the 13th.
There you go.
I mean, you know, the other issue that could come up this month, I would say maybe on the 20th, I don't know if anybody has any passion, but it is election night, and I don't know if that would bother anybody to be here on that night, having, we've had that before, where we've had Aldermen ask that we not meet on that night because they were involved in something, someplace, and so we haven't always done that, but I just throw that out there. We don't need to make a decision right now, but that's, that's just there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we go then to committee reports. Community Development, Alderman Brown?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. Some of the items have just been discussed. As mentioned, we're going to take a couple of items off of tomorrow evening's agenda, but we do still have quite a lot of items. We've got the vacation of a public alley behind 321 East Wilson, zoning map amendments. We've got comprehensive plan changes, amendments to the land use map. We've got zoning map change for the southeast corner of Fabian Parkway and Eagle Boulevard, and then we also have the land use map change for that 1025 through 119 North Washington. So as you can see, we've got quite a few items. to come on that. Also, there's going to be the wastewater treatment facility, item has come up there where there's been some odor issues apparently. And there's been, there's going to be some discussion on whether or not we should provide for some temporary odor control. And then the most important, I think, tomorrow night is going to be the presentation on the department, from the department heads on their annual report. So that meeting starts at seven-thirty. Plan Commission starts on March seventh at seven PM. And then Historic Preservation starts Monday at five-thirty PM. That's Monday, March twelfth. All right.
All right. Government Services, Alderman Attick?
Well, the only thing that Government Services has going, and as we discussed earlier, we'll be discussing the strategic plan and branding on March thirteenth.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
The only thing we had up was the pedestrian crossing tomorrow night to discuss. Thank you.
Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Mayor, we are discussing tomorrow night the odor emanating from the wastewater treatment facility.
We have other business? Anybody on the council, anything they want to bring up? All right, going to the mayor's report. First, I want to start off with a question. I am not going to be able to go myself because I've already got some other things I've committed to do during that time period. So I won't be going on the drive down to Springfield this year. I was wondering, how many of you are going to plan to go?
Haven't thought about it yet.
I had, I had committed, but we, we had talked about, this might not be a, a good use of, of the funds of the city to spend for us to go down there. Because I'm also not sure how much is going to get done, to be honest with you, with everything that's going on. So it's my bad.
Wait for the dust to settle. Alderman?
I, I would absolutely disagree. I'd say this is absolutely the year that we need to be in their faces. I vaguely remember last year, we had, what, half of us there? We were yelling about the cutting of the local distributor fund, I believe. Alderman Wolf saved that fund for the state of Illinois, literally in their face. This is not the year to, to let up. So I, I will absolutely be there.
Alderman Chance?
I love this year.
Alderman, excuse me, Calhoun?
Yeah, I, I agree with what you're saying. With, it's, it's been a very good thing every year. The unknown this year is, we don't know who the governor is going to be in the fall, so you could be talking to people that it doesn't necessarily, aren't going to be sitting there in six months. So, but I do fully understand, agree with you that in the past, it's been very beneficial. Although I think when we were kind of talking about it, it was the, you know, after Sam's Club leaving and the gaps that, and we're having staff kind of do it. I would say if you're, if we were going to go, you know, the people that were going to go, just pay for it yourself. It's not that much. It's like one, you know, one night hotel stay, but that adds up. And it's, there's no reason we couldn't do it ourselves.
But your question is, who's planning to go?
Yeah, I just was curious to, you know, I will just make the observation. My observation is the place has come apart down there. And it's not working. And it's, it's, it's a very bad time. And maybe nobody going, maybe that sends a message. I agree with Alderman Chance that, that there is probably a need to have some faces down there, although I'm not at all optimistic that, other than make your point and try to bring things to their attention, I don't think anything's going to get done. I mean, you know, anybody that tells you now, go to the state or federal government and get a grant, I've had other mayors tell me they laugh in their face because the grants are gone. There is no ability with the, with the debt that now incurs at both levels of government. The idea of, you know, getting millions of dollars to do anything is, is just pure fantasy anymore. So there's not any opportunity, I don't think, to, but I mean, the other thing that seems to be happening, there's been some really, I haven't bothered you with them because most of them are, are crashing and burning, but there's been some really crazy legislation introduced down there this session that, you know, one of them was, say, we're, we're, we don't know for sure where it's going. It's a real strange bill, but it got a bill that seems to want to discuss our ability to appoint the police chief and the fire chief. And that's, that's a, that's got most of the city's pretty upset. The municipal league is up on the ceiling about it. So I'm hopeful that that's not going anyplace. But it started moving real quick through the legislature. And so people started, started asking questions about what's this all about. So I mean, I just cite that as an example of kind of how things are going astray down there. And there's nobody seems to be in command of anything and it's just a free-for-all and free-for-all environment. So I, I would encourage some of us to go. It's, it hit me at a time when I'm already committed to go other places, so I won't be able to go. But there is a lot of, a lot of problems and there don't seem to be any, getting any better. And certainly, this election that we're now, we're opened the first poll here today, we didn't have a big vote. They had thirty-seven people show up to vote absentee today, or early vote, or whatever you want to describe it. But I would think that there's going to be a huge crowds here before this is all over with, the people wanting to vote in both parties primaries to see where this whole thing is going. And I guess I would encourage everybody that has an opinion to come down. You know, Illinois has this strange way we do it. You have to declare your party. And so that everybody then knows who the, who is a possible candidate to be recorded by a Democrat or a Republican for their vote in the future elections. And I think that's the whole strategy behind the declaratory primary law that Illinois has had for so long. And, you know, I, there's some people telling me right flat out, they won't go vote because they don't think it's anybody's business to know whether they're a Democrat or a Republican. And so a lot of people do stay away from that. But we'll see where that, that all flushes out. But this is a very trying time in Illinois. And it's unlike anything. I've been here, as you know, a long time. I've never seen anything quite like the state of Illinois is right now. And I'm not pointing any fingers of blame at anybody on it. I think it's probably a, a shared plate of, of mismanagement down there on a lot of different areas. And it's something that really is starting to come home to bear its burdens on all the taxpayers in the state of Illinois. So I don't know. I, I just think that it's a, a very trying moment for us. And every twenty years, they come up with the opportunity to have a new state constitutional convention. And we always kind of poo-poo that idea. And there's, the folks in Springfield are the leaders of it. They don't want to have any changes. So the first constitutional convention was in nineteen seventy. The next one, the opportunity to have one was in nineteen ninety. That got shot down. So then it goes to two thousand and ten, and that got shot down. So the next one is in two thousand and thirty. So it's going to be ten years before they get that shot at, at reforming state government. So we'll see where the whole thing flushes out, but it's going to be, I think, some very trying moments. And as you notice, many of the representatives in our area have chosen not to seek reelection, that they're saying it's time to get out of here and go someplace else. So it's very problematic. But on a brighter side, I will tell you that here in Batavia, we're doing some stuff that I think is getting a lot of interest. One is, and I'll just kind of go easy on this, but in the last six months, I must have gotten calls from fifteen different mayors in the area wanting to have copies of our neighbor's magazine. That they've heard about it and think, especially the idea where you bring all the governments together into the same document, the school district, the park district, city, township, everybody together, that everybody wants, and I don't know how many copies I've sent out or taken to, to places. I was just up to Rockford and the mayor up there had asked me about it. So I was going to town. So I stopped up at the Rockford City Hall a couple of weeks ago and had called him and told him I was coming. They were very gracious. And we chatted about it for quite a while at the Rockford City Hall. So I just cite that as an example of, you know, a lot of people are looking to what we're doing here. And we get a lot of very positive bats on the back for that magazine. And if you open it up and look at it, it really is a wealth of material on the community on a bimonthly basis. You get this, you know, when the garbage is going to get picked up and, you know, what's the latest on, you know, everything from blowing the tornado siren to, you know, how many times the, the teams are going to play at the high school. I mean, there's just a wealth of information there. And it's really terrific that we do that. Last Thursday night, switching the subject, I was, took in this meeting that was held out at Batavia High School to talk about the future of the Batavia Library. And what struck me about the meeting was, is that there was a number of librarians and library people from other towns came to that meeting to, to hear about what Batavia was going to do next. Because Batavia is now recognized in the library arena as one of the leaders in how to do it. And specifically, all the sharing of technology that we do and all the reach out that they have for the young people's library. And this whole thing about technology, and it was discussed at great lengths at the table I sat in, there's a lot of people that don't, including myself, that don't have a lot of technology skill. They went to school in the era before the, the computer was ever in any school classrooms. So now people get required, you know, their grandchildren will call them and say, can you email me this or do this? People don't know how to do it, but they can go up to the Batavia Public Library. They have a technology support desk where you sit down and tell them what you need and they serve you with it. They'll go ahead and do it for you or help you do it. And so the one thing I'm hearing up there the last week was, is that the library as we know it is probably going to change over the next thirty to forty years. And the number of books that are there are probably going to be decreasing because most people will be putting the book on the web or on the CD or, you know, the computer. And that's where you'll be able to dial up any book you want and read it to some degree. And so there's, there's, that's going on. So the, the library as we know it is going to be kind of a changing institution, but it's something that Batavia's been at the forefront the last few years as being a leader in how to do it and how to design a building that's usable. And librarian tells me right now that they're averaging between eight and a thousand, eight hundred and a thousand people a day use the Batavia Public Library. So it's probably become maybe the number one anchor tenant of business and activity in the downtown area on a, on a day-by-day basis. And some of us here at this table will remember when that was originally proposed, that was a real hellfire and damnation referendum. Because there was a lot of people that didn't want it, didn't want to change, didn't want to do this, didn't want to pay for it. And the referendum on the night it was voted on was nip and tuck up to the very end. And the last precinct that came in was the Homestead. And the library won overwhelmingly, thanks in large degree to the vote it got out of the Homestead. So it speaks, I think, to a lot of things that we grope with and we have troubles with and we ponder about. At the end, my observation is, most of them seem to come out all right. That, that it may take twenty years, but we generally can get ourselves there. And if you go talk to some of the old timers that come in here that haven't been in Batavia in twenty or thirty years, they'll tell, they come in and say, my goodness gracious, how this place has changed. And for the good. And so, and there's other towns not very far away where that's the, the opposite is true, where the town used to be prosperous and upcoming and now things have happened and it's kind of falling by the wayside. So, you know, we, you should all pat yourself on the back a little bit here because a lot of stuff that's going on in this town has been very beneficial and is very much noticed and appreciated by a lot of people. And so I don't think we have to make many apologies here. We, we certainly keep our debates going here and we have free and open debates and we get a lot of stuff, hopefully, eventually understood and agreed to and we move forward. But sometimes it takes a while. But enough pontification on my part. Alderman Brown had entertained a motion for adjournment.
I move adjourn the City Council meeting.
Motion second. Court take a voice vote?
All in favor?
Aye.